All right, thank you. Welcome to the Ince City Council, Monday, October the 16th. We're going to call a meeting to order. Claire, Reverend George.
Let us pray. Father God, we ask that you bless us together, bind us with love and unity. Father, touch this city. They need you right now, Father. We ask that you touch our minds and make them unified. Father, just as we continue to move, Father, we ask that you take over and guide us and lead us and show us the right way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and free to be just as for all.
Roll call, Madam Chair.
Here.
Counselmember Chisholm.
Here.
Counselmember Shaw.
Here.
Counselmember Washington.
Here.
Counselmember Wally.
Present.
Mayor Pearl Tim Howard.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly is on an excused absence.
All right, thank you. Before we get started, I would like to ask the audience if you can please hold your comments down because we can hear. It's being taped and it's hard for the viewers that's watching TV to hear the speaker while we hear voices in the background. So if you have anything to say, you can just fill out a form and your comments will be heard. Okay, thank you. Approval of agenda?
So move back to the chair.
It's been moved a second.
Second. No, I have, okay, go ahead. What are we doing now? I was going to approve it with additions. The second.
Who's second?
I didn't, I didn't second.
You did second.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
No, she's saying that she needs to add something.
Okay, so it's been, it's been moved. I need a second for this, for the approval of agenda.
Oh, for her to add on the...
It has to be second.
Okay, second.
Okay, it's been approved and second. Now, what's your pleasure?
No question. I would like to add it to the agenda based on the information we received from the attorney as far as the revocation of the license of the flower bowl, too. I'd like that added to the agenda.
Okay.
I need a motion.
Okay, okay, so it's going to be, it's a motion. It has to be a motion to put the add to the agenda. So it's been approval of agenda. We have to do that second, right? It has to be separate?
No, I need to know the action that you want. What's your motion you want to add?
My motion is that we, as a council body, instruct the clerk to revoke the license of the flower bowl, too, because it did not follow any of the procedures necessary to open. Ask her the opinion we received from our attorney.
Okay, is any discussion on this?
Okay, a question I have. Is the flower bowl on the agenda for tonight?
She's adding it. She's asking, she's making a motion to add it to the agenda for tonight.
Okay, because I thought that was something that was in the review of the planning commission and attorney at that point.
No, no, no.
We received an opinion.
We received an opinion two weeks ago and she just added it for the agenda for discussion and for discussion, correct?
Discussion and action.
And action. Okay, it's been, any questions on this item? Okay, all those in favor of approving agenda with the add-on?
With, going to be item E?
Yes.
Sorry, there's one more thing. All of the, is there any possible way all of those budget amendments can be separate? Is there any way for us to separate them? Because they're very confusing as presented.
Okay, we will have a speak on that once we get to that.
Okay, that's fine.
Once we get to that item or whatever.
Okay, we can go ahead with this.
So all in favor of approval of agenda with the item E?
I just want a clarification. Was the flower bowl issue on the agenda for tonight? She just added?
She just adding it.
Okay, so we already, that already been through the council, am I correct?
No.
No. She's adding the agenda for discussion and action, okay? So you can approve it with it or you don't have to approve it. So we're going to talk about this add. We're going to add it to item E. It's at item E. You okay?
No, because I'm hearing everybody. Nobody gave a recommendation whatsoever and for her.
That's where we put it on agenda for discussion and action.
You can add.
You didn't say it was discussion. Didn't you just say it was going there for denial?
If it's on the agenda, it has to be.
The motion is to.
The motion is to put it on the agenda, but it's going to be.
So is that part of this going to be added, what you're saying?
Yes, it's going to be up under E.
And attorney, he can discuss, discuss it when that time comes.
Yes, once we get to E, it's going to be up under discussion and possibly, and an action taken, okay? So are there any other questions on the approval of agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Okay, we're going to go to roll call because I didn't hear that. Roll call, please, Madam Chair.
Counselmember Shaw.
Yes.
Counselmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Counselmember Wally.
Yes.
Counselmember Washington.
Yes.
Counselmember Williams.
No.
Okay, the ayes have it, one nay. Okay, moving along. Consider agenda.
So move back to the chair.
It's been moved and supported, consider agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Okay, we do have a presentation under Raymond. Audit him for FYN in June the 30th, 2022. Mr. Clark.
What you just said, he said aye, aye. The motion passed for the ayes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Daniel Clark. Sure.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Daniel Clark. I am a principal with Raymond. I am the signing principal on the fiscal year 22 audit. So before you, and I think which was provided to you, is a hard copy of the presentation. You should have also received at some point the financial statements, which would have looked something like this, and a board communication letter, which would have looked like this. But the agenda, or the presentation is going to cover both of those items. But I'm happy to answer any questions within those other two documents. So with that, tonight I'm going to cover these couple of items, going to introduce you to the team. We do have annual required board communications, financial results of the city for 2022, talk about upcoming accounting pronouncements, and then can open it up for questions. Feel free, though, to stop me as I'm going through this to ask questions as we go as well. So this is the team. I introduced myself. It was made up of three other individuals, Paula, Sharon, and Alexi. All three of these also worked on your engagement last year as well. So moving on to board communications, happy to state that the city did receive an unmodified or what we call a clean opinion on your financial statements for June 30th of 2022. So that would be what you were looking for, meaning the financial statements as submitted to Treasury are materially correct. Number two, we're asked to communicate any new accounting pronouncements that were implemented during the year. There was one related to GASB-87, GASB standing for Government Accounting Standards Board, related to leases, and I'll talk briefly about that in a couple moments. Number three, we are asked to assess management's estimates. Those things include depreciation expense on capital assets, those inputs that calculate your pension and your OPEB liabilities, any allowance on doubtful accounts as far as uncollectible receivables, and we assess those and deem those all to be reasonable. And number four, we encounter no difficulties in performing the audit other than just timing of completing the audit. So the audit was completed last month in September. It was due at the end of December of last year, so it was about nine months late. Any information that we requested was eventually provided. Any questions that we asked were answered. So there were no difficulties as far as getting answers to our questions, but there was some significant delays in getting some information, but in the end, we were able to obtain all of that information.
Could we ask something right here? You said something about uncollected or unaccountable receivables or something of that nature. Would that be that $3.4 million? The way it was explained to us was that it was, we were spending more, we were spending that amount, and we didn't really have that amount. So would that be what you're talking about there?
So what I'm talking about is mostly when it relates to water and sewer receivables. So anytime that you're billing, obviously, there's a small percentage that's considered uncollectible. So we just have to assess that number and make sure that that's a reasonable assessment.
In essence, it's bill payments that have not been received by the department.
Yeah, and once they get a certain age, then there's an understanding that potentially they may not get collected or that they have to be added on to property tax bills, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So number five, there were no material misstatements. So the records that were provided to us by city, no material adjustments were needed. There were a couple of uncorrected misstatements that were deemed to be passable, one of which related to the GASB-87 leases. So that is currently not recorded on your books, but it was deemed to be immaterial enough to keep it on what we call our past adjustment schedule. So no issues noted there. Number six, and we'll talk about this on the next slide, we were a couple material weaknesses and one significant deficiency, which is listed now up on the screen, slide number As you'll see, four out of five of these are repeat comments. So number one, number three, four, and five are all repeat from the prior year. Number one relates to utility billing receivables and kind of just touched on that. So you do have approximately $218,000 in uncollected receivables that we feel like need to be transferred to property tax bills that has yet to be done. Again, that was a comment last year. It wasn't that same dollar amount, but best practices is to move those uncollectible receivables after a certain age to property tax bills.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question on this?
Yeah.
It also states, too, in the utility bills, what about, is, some of the people may have payment arrangements with this effect, this dollar amount?
It potentially could. I think this is the entirety of that balance.
Okay, okay.
So potentially, some of the $218,000 could include that, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Number two, a finding that was not noted last year, but one that we always recommend, if it isn't happening regularly, anytime journal entries are made, we always would state that there should be a preparer and a separate reviewer to just make sure that there's a double check. We didn't notice any issues with the journal entries, but we always want to make sure that if journal entries are being made into the system, that there's two people involved. And that would be the same way with any control that you have in place here, any wire transfers, et cetera. Any of those types of things, we expect there to be a preparer and a reviewer. Number three, and again, this was a comment last year, you did have pension and OPEBs. So OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. So that would be your city post-employment medical plans, et cetera. And we did request certain information that was not able to be provided to us. So this was similar to last year. I know there were old files that were not able to be located related to some retirees, et cetera. So number four, material weakness related to timely report issuance. So as I already stated, your report is due six months after your year-end, so it would have been due December 31st of 2022. It wasn't issued until September. So again, material weakness related to not being able to file by the statutory deadline. And then number five, material weakness related to payroll withholding liability. So this was a finding that we noted last year related to some payroll withholdings April and May of 2022 that had not yet been remitted, but due to the lateness of the audit last year, again, this was a finding that has now since been remedied, I believe. After June 30th of 2023, these monies have been remitted properly, but at year-end, it still was sitting as a payable. Any questions on that before I move to the financial items? If you want to come back to questions on that, that's fine, if something comes up. So slide number six, this shows the assets of the city. They're currently sitting at $101 million in assets. Last year, you had about 96. So your assets went up about $4.8 million. You'll see a couple of the big swings. Your cash and cash equivalents went down about $2.2 million. Most of that relates to you had significant capital purchases in your water sewer fund. You had about $4 million in capital improvements in that fund. So a lot of that cash decrease is in relation to that. Also, your receivables did go up about $2.3 million. A lot of that has to do with, because you did not file timely, that the city or the state was withholding certain dollars. So you had about $1.3 million due from state that I'm assuming has since been remitted once the audit was completed. Net capital assets, as I stated, that went up about $2.2 million. You had significant water sewer additions of about $4 million. Your governmental activities had about $1.5 million in additions. That was netted with $3.2 million in depreciation expense. So that increased $2.2 million. Go to the next slide. So the liabilities of the city, about $62 million in liabilities. Last year, you had just over $61 million. So your liabilities only went up about $1.2 million. You'll see most of that is related to that net pension liability number. So your net pension liability did go up just over $6 million. Unfortunately, that's not something that can be controlled by you very much. A lot of this is driven by investment returns in the pension plan, and last year, the investment returns in the pension plan were negative, as was seen throughout the state. So your liability obviously went up because those assets that went against it went down. You'll see your long-term debt went down about $1.8 million. You had no significant new debt added, but you paid off about $1.9 million in debt. So that's why your long-term debt went down. And no other comments at this point on this slide. So as I just stated, I was talking about your general or your liability, or your pension liability, which is made up of your general plan and your police and fire. So this slide here, slide number eight, shows your general pension liability. All the way over to the right-hand side, 2022 column, you have a total liability in general employee pension of $13.5 million. Your assets in that plan were $8.5 million. So that net was $5 million. So you're about 63% funded as of 2022. Last year, you were 73% funded. Again, the significant decrease there, as you'll see, is mostly that middle bar went down because those are your investments in the plan had a negative year. I would expect in 2023, you should see that pop back up because investment returns have been much better since then, since this was measured. The next slide is your police and fire pension. Again, all the way over to the right, you had 37.9 in total pension liability. You had $25 million in assets against that plan. So you had a net pension liability of $12.8 million, or you're about 66% funded. Last year, you were 79% funded. Again, the same situation. The assets went down, whereas the liability actually stayed relatively stable. And then your total OPEB or your other post-employment benefit liability, so your medical insurance, all the way over the right in 2022, you had a total OPEB liability of $6.5 million. You'll see that that actually dropped significantly over last year. There were some assumption changes in calculating the liability, most of which related to the discount rate, which increased significantly due to increased interest rates. So that actually reduced your liability, and you saw a positive trend in that liability number. There are no assets against this, so it's an unfunded plan. It's a pay-as-you-go plan. So there are no assets that relate to the OPEB plan similar to the pension. All right, so that's talking about the liabilities. So what's left is your equity assets minus liabilities is equity, or in governmental speak, is your net position. It's made up of three different amounts, net investment in capital assets, which is your biggest chunk of 59%, restricted dollars of 12%, and then you had unrestricted of negative 29%, which we'll talk about briefly. So next slide, slide 12. This is a picture of those different balances over the last five years. So you'll see you had about $55 million in investment in capital assets. So what capital assets would equate to would be your buildings, your infrastructure, your roads, vehicles, et cetera. That continues to increase as you add new assets every year. The bottom line is your restricted money, which remain relatively stable at $10.6 million. And then the next slide, slide 13. So this is your unrestricted. You'll see that bottom line is your unrestricted with pension and OPEB factored in. So if you want to look at what your unrestricted balance would look like without the effects of your pension and your OPEB, you're sitting at about approximately negative 4.8. So a much better picture than adding back in those liabilities at negative 27 million. And then we'll talk about the income statement on slide 14. So government-wide, so all funds combined, the city had about $36.6, $36.7 million in revenue, all the way over to the right. You had about $33 million in expenses. So you had a positive or net income of $3.5 million. So the last two years, you've shown positive, actually, four out of the last five years have showed positive net income entity-wide. Next slide. So there are a couple of major revenue line items that the city does bring in. One, that top line is intergovernmental. That middle line is property taxes. And then that bottom line is charges for services. So just talking about your intergovernmental revenue, you'll see at the very top, that went up from 8.6 to 10.3. So you did see a significant jump in federal revenue. So the city did receive ARPA dollars in 2022 of about $2.4 million, I believe. So that was all recognized in 2022. Your property taxes did go up to 8.2 million approximately, which was an increase over last year of 6.5. The reason for that increase is the city did have a couple of judgment levies that equated to about $1.8 million, which jumped that number from 6.5 to 8.2. And then there were no significant changes in your charges for services that remain relatively stable at 2.7. And then we'll talk about the general fund, which is obviously the operational fund of the city. So in 2022, all the way over to the right, the city had just over $18 million in revenue. It had $17.7 in expenses. So you saw actually a positive increase to your general fund of about $344,000. You'll see last year, very small increase. This year, a little bit larger, but the three previous years had significant losses in the general fund. So as you're aware, the general fund, or may not be aware, the general fund does have a deficit, and you'll see this in the next slide, slide 17. So typically, we compare your fund balance or your unrestricted fund balance to a year's worth of expenditures, and typically, this would be a positive number, but because you have a negative balance in general fund, you're currently sitting at a negative 0.16 of coverage ratio. So this did increase or improve a little bit over the last two years. So again, something to be mindful of. Benchmark here would be to be around the two-to-four-month mark of a fund balance. So there would be a considerable investment that would be needed to get this up to that mark that you were closer to in 2018. And then the last financial slide, slide 18, speaking briefly about your water and sewer fund, cash balance and cash flow. So your cash balance, that top line, went from $13.3 million all the way down to $8.4 million. The reason for that significant decrease was a significant investment in capital improvements this year. So you, and I already spoke to that, had about $4, $4.5 million in capital improvements. Obviously, that came out of cash, and that also is what made you have a net cash negative from last year to this year of about $4.9 million. So again, investing some of that surplus cash into improvements for the city, but still had a very healthy cash balance. So the final slide is just upcoming accounting pronouncements. You'll see there are six. Most of these, I have NA next to them because they really don't have much applicability to the city. The only one that we'll be looking at for 2023 would be subscription-based information technology arrangements, and then for fiscal year 25, related to how compensated absences or accrued vacation sick are accounted for. And again, those will be discussed with the city and worked through as those become applicable. With that, that is the end of the presentation. If you can answer any questions.
Does anybody up here have any questions? No questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Let's get it out. Okay, we're moving on to new business now.
Okay, item 9A is for this body to consider approving the attached budget amendments for the general fund, fire fund, major street fund, local street fund, and water project-based sewer fund.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
So move back to the chair.
It's been moved. Any support?
Second.
Second.
Second with discussion. Any discussion on this?
This is the amendments we were speaking of earlier with regards to Councilwoman Wally asking about separating them, so.
Yes.
Okay, is that a possibility that we could separate these? Because a lot of them, I can understand voting for money to be put in, but asking for amendments because somebody didn't do their job, I'm kind of lost at that point.
Okay, well, this is the pleasure of the body, what this body wants.
It has always been together. I mean, I understand.
It's been together.
The councilwoman is saying, but I mean, that's how we are, that's, you know.
Okay, that's fine if you want to leave it that way. I have no problem with that other than not voting for it.
Is any other questions on this item? All right, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, ayes have it. Motion is passed. Item B.
Item 9B is to consider authorizing, excuse me, is to consider approving special land use for a secondhand auto dealer at 26300 Michigan Avenue in the B3 General Business District.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
So move.
It's been moved. Any second?
Support.
Support? It's been moved. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussions on this item? No discussions? All those in favor, say aye. Nays?
Nay.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on that. Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Wally.
Nay.
Councilwoman Washington.
Nay.
Counselmember Shaw.
Nay.
Counselmember Chisholm.
Nay.
And Counselmember Williams.
Nay.
Okay, motion, die, lack of support now. You do know that you have to give one of those reasons, okay? So do you give them now or you give them now? You have to give me, give us one of those reasons.
For the special land use.
For special land use.
Okay, there are several. Okay, there are several that appear to this. But it says excessive or additional cost to public services. There's always an additional cost to public services. They only use it once. That's once we used it and didn't have to, you know, because they're there, okay? The other one is. It says harmony with existing character. I mean, they're changing a chocolate shop to a auto place. So I have an issue with that. Nobody else that wants to chime in. I can reach the list of special land use reviews that they utilize for this type of thing if you all want. If you don't have a copy in front of you, but there is one in your pocket.
Do each of us, we have to all give our own.
If you want to, if there's an additional one.
I don't believe, I don't believe this is an improvement to the community or is going to bring economic vitality to the area.
We don't have to give one. We don't all have to give one. Okay, so we did get some reasons. Okay, so motion failed for item B. Okay, item C?
Item 9C is for this body to consider.
Okay, order please. Okay, go ahead, item C.
Consider adopting a resolution to identify support and outline the harmony of the Lemoine Gardens housing redevelopment with the 2017 City of Inchester master plan and recognizing the master plan as the community revitalization plan.
Okay, what's your pleasure on this? It's been moved in seconds. It's been moved in second in discussion. Aaron, Mr. Cooper? Would you like to just come up and just give a brief description of what this resolution, I mean, what this council action is? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. In 2017, the city council passed a revitalization plan. And so, excuse me, all we're asking is for the city to support the revitalization of the Lemoine area. So Ms. Dixon was able to extract language out of that plan. And it just comes in front of you all as a resolution to go a part of our tax credit application.
There's any, just thank you, Mr. Cooper. Is there any other discussion on this item? Thank you. Okay, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carried. Next item?
Item D is for this body to consider approving a street closure block party request on Oakwood between Central and Eastern for an annual Halloween block party from 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM hosted by Darlanda Gardner.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second in the discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carried. Item E?
9E is for this body to instruct the court to revoke the license of Flower Bowl 2 based on the attorney's opinion that was submitted to us last week.
What's your pleasure on this? It's been moved in second?
Second.
You moved, you moved it, right? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, there are several points of discussion. And the fact is that the Flower Bowl 2 never, never applied for any of the permissions that they're supposed to apply for in opening a marijuana facility. In one instance, they were supposed to apply for a new special land use because the building they're operating out of had been vacant for over 90 days. That's one of our ordinances. And that was upheld through the information we were given by the attorney. In other words, it says, it says, based upon the interplay between the two ordinances, there are two ordinances that he failed to follow. The short answer is the Flower Bowl 2 was required to seek a new special land use approval because the property was deemed vacant after 90 days. Vacant 90 days after the fire occurred. And when he failed to do that, he failed to ask for an extension on that. His land use that was in there became null and void. Now, we have been told for weeks and weeks and weeks by the planning commission that a special land use goes with the property no matter what. Well, obviously, that's not correct as held up by the attorney and by our ordinance. So, and he even puts those ordinances in here. So I did request, I sent an email to administration, planning, special projects, that they put this on the agenda for revocation. I did not receive a response. But these are all the steps that it took for this place to open. Now, if we're not doing what we're supposed to do at every juncture of what happens in this city, at some point, someone has to be responsible. Now, if it went through building, it went through planning, it went through this place and that place. At some point, this, someone in this city should have said, wait a minute, we can't do this. But they didn't, and it gets all the way to us. It takes us three months to decide to turn it over to the attorney. And he, and we paid him a bunch of money for something we could have read ourselves in the ordinance and agreed to. So at this point, he need, this license needs to be revoked because it's not in line with any of the qualifications or requirements for opening a marijuana facility within the city. And if the attorney, did you want to elaborate on any of this or did you read it through or?
I've read it through. The memo speaks for itself. However, I think there are definitely ramifications for either side, whether you revoke an operating license or whether you keep, whether you maintain operation with the business. And therefore, it's upon council to make a decision in what's best interest for the city as a whole.
Which is what I'm asking you to do. Follow the rules once again.
Go ahead, you have, you have a question, go ahead.
Didn't we, didn't we get a different opinion from the planning?
Which was incorrect.
Is it incorrect?
It was incorrect. Planning team, they can speak for themselves.
Can she speak on that or no?
Because she's asking about it now.
Okay. Go ahead, how he'll do you?
You know, I was asking if the planner can actually speak on this because, I mean, as what it says, that Flower Bowl 2 never sought special land use. But the question I have for the attorney is it says that, if you can make sense, if you can make this make sense to me. It says, city clerk Felicia Rutledge, not the Community Development Department, a board or commission issued a letter on July 15, 2019, waiving the requirement that operations must commence within 180 days of being issued a license. So can you explain that part of the?
So I think it's better to.
Just doesn't make sense.
I give exactly what you're asking. To put this in more perspective for you, essentially, the original owner owned the property in 2016 to 2019. Fire happened early 2019. The ordinance comes into play. Once there's a fire, you have 30 days to apply for your vacancy, and it can be extended up to six months. That original owner contacted the city clerk well after the 157.11 timeframe. And the clerk said that there was an extension for 180 days. Now, I don't have that communication with me. However, our stance is that the city clerk at that time did not have that authority to make that opinion. And therefore, even with that extension, it does not constitute as a waiver of liability based upon what the ordinance says. But again, this, this is now a new business that has been operating. And it is well within the city's council's hands to decide what's in the best interest to keep it operating or to revoke their license. And there's ramifications for both.
Can you explain the ramifications for both?
It would cause me to speculate at this time. And again, we just focused both, like specifically upon what the special land use was and if there was still one applied to Flower Bowl 2. But on its face, many things such as pending litigation on either side, money that goes into either way, how you choose. It's just many ramifications that could happen that, again, would cause me to speculate and go down a rabbit hole.
Any other, any other?
Yes, just for the audience and for us a little bit, we had talked about this back in, on April 17, 2023. And it was streamed of course, so it's on YouTube. And it's at marker 49 minutes and 30 seconds to two hours and eight minutes during that presentation. We talked about a multitude of different pending applicants who came before us for this, I'm gonna say adult-use recreational marijuana and those special land uses, things of that nature. This was not one of them. This was one that was operating already. And the other ones, when we talked, the question was asked, would they be relocating Flower Bowl 1 to the other location? And it was said, yes. So in our mindset of what was being discussed up here, of what we were counting as licenses before we voted on installing that, I'm sorry, not installing, instilling or reactivating, if you will, the cap for dispensaries, that was not necessarily in our account. The other one was. So when all of this went through, as we continued moving forward, and then it got brought before us, we are at this point where we just have obligated duty to figure out how we're going to handle this situation because we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven potential pending and six operating right now. And that wasn't in the, in the count when we put the cap in place again at eight. So that's why, since this was brought before us and to our attention, I went ahead and seconded this so we can discuss it and start to work things out and figure out what the right way would be to navigate this, especially being from the community. They're saying we have too many at this point.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Well, considering that this was not part of the, the cap as he stated, because everyone was thinking that Flower Bowl on Michigan Avenue was going to be coming. But still, the bottom line is it is in violation of so many ordinances. It is across, it is within 500 feet of a daycare center, which one of our ordinance strictly prohibits. And that came into effect after, I mean, the ordinance was there when he moved in. So he was in violation there.
Okay, so that's why we on the, that's why we on the floor right now.
He has not, he has not, like I said, he did not get a special land use. He did not have a site plan review. He did not have any of the things required by other establishments that open within this city. So whatever the ramifications are, two wrongs don't make a right, you know? We're here to make sure that we uphold the laws of this city, okay? And he's broken several of them in opening this place. Now, can we sit here in all honesty and say that's okay?
That's why it's a motion on the floor. You guys got it.
Well, that's, that's.
The motion is to either. Pardon me? Do you have anything else you need to say?
Yeah, what, what did the planner recommend?
Ask her to come on.
Had the planner to come back and what she recommended.
As I've stated previously to this body and shared in a memo sent directly to you, I refer to my experience and I've conferred with more senior colleagues at my firm and still stand in the statements I've made about this special land use potentially carrying over to this business. There were, in my opinion that I offered in the written memo, there were things that I deferred to the city attorney. And the property maintenance code was not something that is within my, I guess, what I typically review and was not something I reviewed in this case. So if this body feels that it was not in compliance with the property maintenance code as the city attorney's memo has stated, then at that point, it's, it's up to this body for whatever your choice may be. But I still stand by my previous recommendations based off of the zoning code recommendations.
So George, in terms, she sent everything, we sent everything to the attorneys, okay? And this is what we got. This is the recommendation of the attorney. And it states right here, short answer, it said, the short answer is that the Flower Bowl was required to seek a new special land use approval because the property was deemed vacant 90 days after the fire occurred when the previous owner, CINC, failed to apply for demolition or rehabilitation permit, okay? That's, that's, that's their findings.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, okay, there's two different recommendations was made.
It's two different recommendations?
Well, listen what I'm saying.
Okay.
Did you hear what she just said here? I'm just saying. She said a mistake made, right?
So there are components of the city's attorney that I did not touch on. The property maintenance code is not something that I review as the planning department. And that is a main component of the city attorney's memo and opinion on this matter. So I'm deferring to the city attorney's opinion at this point. I just stand behind my previous statements as it regards to zoning code, but at this point defer to the city attorney.
Okay, because everybody, everybody's, I mean, what I'm looking at, how this whole thing is going to come out is, is a lawsuit, right? Another lawsuit on Inchester? That's what is going to happen, another lawsuit in Inchester because of mistakes. And how many places we got closed right now that's filing lawsuits against us?
I could speak. Okay, so, wait, wait, one second.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I get on right now. I'm saying two different opinions coming from the planning and the attorney, am I correct?
Did you read this, George? You got this right?
Yeah, I got that right in front of me. So what did you get out of it, your issue? You said if I read it, so what you get out of it?
I got the same thing that you got. It's got the facts. You want me to read it?
Yeah, let them come here, yeah.
Okay, okay, on March 26, these are the facts. In March 2016, landowners CINC received special land use approval from the City of Inchester to operate a medical provision center. He was not here at that time. Later in May 2016, CINC also secured approval for the site plan and insurance of a business license via court order. The order states, May, on May 24, 2016, CINC received a building certificate of occupancy. CINC then became fully operational. On January 31, 2019, a fire occurred at 315 Inchester that made the building inhabitable. Several months later, CINC requested additional time to begin operation for an exceptional circumstances of a fire. Former city clerk Felicia Rutledge, not the Community Development Department, a board of, board or commission, an Inchester planning commission issued a letter on July 15, 2019, waiving the requirements that operated, operations must commence within 180 days of being issued a license. There is no record of CINC seeking permits to, permit to rebuild the property. CINC sold the property, they sold the property at 315 Inchester Row to RJHL LLC DBA Flower Bowl 2. Then it's got on December 15, 2020, Flower Bowl was issued a general permit for demo and cleanup. On May 4, 2021, a permit was issued for reconstruction after the fire demonstrated. Flower Bowl 2 remodel and space eventually opened in Recreation Marijuana Retail. Flower Bowl 2. Yes.
I'll allow you to read the facts. The analysis is purely attorney-client privileged.
Okay, okay. I didn't read the analysis. Okay, well, I'm done.
No, read your last line. You didn't read.
Okay, the Flower Bowl 2 never sought special land use approval. Those were, those were the facts.
And the rest of it speaks to itself.
I got a question. I was like, oh, I got two questions. So the property says there's no record of CINC seeking permits to rebuild the property. And then they sold the property without actually getting the permits to Flower Bowl 2. So in your recommendations, a business can do that?
In my understanding and interpretation of the zoning ordinance under exceptional circumstances such as fire, that does not disrupt the vested rights of the property at that point. And vested rights are something that the property owner can transfer. Now, the attorney may have a different interpretation of what your ordinance classifies as vested rights, but that's. but that's was my interpretation, um, and the general interpretation of the ordinance as I reviewed this with other planners.
So if, in layman's terms, so if my business is in, it goes under, or something happened and it's a fire, I can sell my building without actually seeking a permit? But then this, the one thing that was confusing to me, still over a hundred and eighty days, that they was permitted to have.
So that's, I think, getting involved with the property maintenance code, um, and that's in the, the building code where there's a requirement that reconstruction has to occur within a certain period of time. And SJ Inc. did not meet that requirement. But that's not something that is reviewed as part of the zoning code, cuz that's pertaining to building maintenance in the building department.
Okay, and then my last question is to attorney, I know you said we would go through, go down a rabbit hole with this, all the things that could happen on both sides, because we talking about making this decision right now, so we need to be able to make a firm decision that won't put the city in litigation or put us in a bind. But we also wanna be able to, we wanna do the right thing as well, so we do need to actually know what are the ramifications on both sides, even the most, um, important ramifications that we'll be actually looking at. Just your top one, um, that we should actually be aware about while we actually making this decision right now.
I'm sorry, what specifically was the question? Are you cutting off it? I'm sorry.
The ramifications that you were speaking about. So what is the main ramifications on both sides that we should actually consider? Because we're making this decision, well, right now, so we kinda need to know that and what, how it will actually put the city in jeopardy or, you know? Cuz we got, we got the, I mean, we got the, um, facts right here, and we also got the answer from, from you guys. I just need to know the ramifications.
So our, our assignment was solely to look into whether or not this property actually had the special land use and whether it was applied here. For me to go into that, I'd have to look into all the legal ramifications. I'd have to look at what is the potential cost. There's so much that goes into it that will require another analysis. And that's why I'm saying, I'm being very vague and broad that there are a lot of ramifications either way. And it would also require me to put myself in an opposing party's potential position to think outside of the box for them.
Well, it's not for us.
I'm done, okay.
They got the box.
All right.
Wait, 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 hold up. You're out of order. You're speaking.
I'm just saying, I mean, it's not to us right now. We, we need to do some more research and or whatever we gonna do through an attorney before we make a decision.
Okay, well, we do have a motion on the floor, so it's, it's your, I mean, vote the way you wanna vote. There is a motion on the floor right now, so we do have to make.
Okay, can't talk about it? It just, I gotta, gotta give you a vote now?
You can still talk about it right now, but I'm just letting you know that it is motion on the floor. So we have to say yea or nay, whatever the pleasure of this body is.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Now, Jane, I wanted to ask you now, is, was there any type of special land use given to this operation in, that you know of as of right now?
Uh, so the special land use that, to my understanding, that's existing is the one from twenty-sixteen. Um, I will share with this body that there was an application made in December of two thousand twenty prior to, this was when there was, uh, in-house planners here that did not proceed through the rest of the process. So there was a special land use application from the, um, Flower Bowl Two in December of two thousand twenty that was recently located in the planning department. Um, at the filing system has been recently gone through by the senior alliance, um, assistant that we have. And during that process, we were, did locate that application. I did say, share that with the, uh, city attorney as well.
So, so there, there is no special land, I mean, it went through the process, but it wasn't processed?
Correct.
So they didn't have the special land use?
Flower Bowl Two did not receive a special land use.
But they just applied for it?
They applied and the city did receive the application in December of two thousand twenty, but not, nothing occurred after those steps.
So no one in the city did anything with it? Okay. Okay, that's, that's all right, Madam Chair.
Do you have a question, Senator?
I wanna go along with whatever the, I, I, I see a, I, I see, I see a different opinion right now, so I don't really know. I'm kinda confused. Okay, I don't wanna, I don't wanna vote for something that's gonna cost the city a lot of money, okay? And, uh, we, we, we got enough, we got enough coming at us now. You know, why add this on there? Okay.
Cuz it's our job.
Somebody, somebody in this city sit there and allow them to go back in there and redo that whole, redo, redo that whole play. Okay, and open, and then now all of a sudden that he got it completed, he come back here saying, well, hey, you know, we got a problem with it.
Well, if you guys wanna table it, or?
I, I think we should too. We get some better, better understanding.
I don't, yeah, the information is.
I, I move for a table.
No, we got a, we got a, we got a motion, we got a motion on the floor right now. So this has to be taken care of, right? And then they can do.
Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Now, now Jane, now with that being said, with the special land use, now was there, was there a mor-, there wasn't a moratorium that we put on, on that so that the application didn't move forward? Because somehow it stopped.
I, I don't believe so, um, given, given the fact that I wasn't here, I don't wanna speak with certainty, but the application was received with payment. On December third, the payment was received. We have the receipt of the payment. So whoever processed that at that point, i- in essence, accepted it. I would say, if you're accepting payment, you're accepting your, the application. If there was a moratorium at that point, I wouldn't accept an application with payment. I can't speak to exactly what occurred at that point, um, or I don't have the timeline in terms of the past moratoriums in front of me at this point. But I will share that payment was accepted with that application in December of two thousand twenty.
And so, so, so that went, so, so that went into the coffers of the city and they processed. So that can, that can cause one of those ramifications that you may mention of.
Potential.
Potential ramifications, because, you know, somebody cashed the check. And, and, and these folks were thinking that, you know, hey, we gonna, we gonna start this business up. So if, you know, if they had no intent in doing that, something shouldn't, that shouldn't have fly. Yeah, well, that's, that's all that happened, Madam Chair.
Yeah, that was one of my things, cuz I actually, um, introduced the moratorium, the marijuana moratorium, in twenty-twenty. And that was one of my things that just popped up to me was that we did it for a year and then we extended it again. So it was for two years, so.
So once again, he shouldn't have gotten the license. If there was a moratorium on, wouldn't you say that?
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, and number two, we have every ordinance right here that pertains to the fact that he shouldn't have, it's in your packet right here.
I agree with you.
All the ordinance that says he shouldn't have been allowed to go forward. Now, these ramifications everybody keeps talking about, they happen in every city. We can't legislate through fear. We can't stop doing our job because we afraid something may happen that doesn't, you know, actually. Anybody can sue, and I guess that's your big ramification we're talking about. But what happens is, you win it. You gotta win it. And everything in our ordinance here says that he shouldn't have done that. So I'm trying to figure out how he can win it when he shouldn't have started it.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, so is everybody finished with the discussion? Cuz we do have a motion on the floor.
Okay, I made the motion. I was just answering the, the question, cuz it's all right here. This is your job.
The motion is to instruct the clerk to revoke the motions of the Flower Bowl based on attorney's opinion.
Okay. And our ordinance.
Yeah, can we hear it? Since we got, since we got a vote on it.
Say that again.
The motion on the floor is for this body to instruct the clerk to revoke the license of Flower Bowl Two based on the attorney's opinion.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Any nays?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna do roll call.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Nay.
Okay, our ayes have it. Motion has been passed.
I, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't have the authority to revoke their license.
Yeah, thank you.
It's just in that opinion.
Thank you.
You issued it.
I did not.
She did not issue that.
That was the attorney.
I did not.
She did not issue that. Okay, well, then, we can amend the motion that the license be revoked, whoever is responsible for doing it. Because it's pretty obvious at this point, no one has done their job. Okay, so hold up, hold up. The motion has failed. Motion's passed, okay? So now we have to instruct the city attorney of what to do. She just stated that she does not have the authority to revoke a license. So now, we gonna have to go back to the city attorney. And then maybe we need to, uh, redo this, uh, motion.
I think it's in the best interest to table this and.
To table it, yes. Okay, so if we, if we decide to table this.
You said I couldn't do that. We had to table.
You, no, 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 George. We have to, once a motion is on the, excuse me, once a motion has been, uh, added and discussion, we have to make, we have to make the motion. We have to say yea or nay. But you can always go back, but once this has been on the floor, we can't, you know, or she would have, the sender would have to rescind it, and she probably wasn't gonna do it.
Okay.
Can I say something, Madam?
Okay, hold up, hold up. City attorney, what is your recommendation on it?
My recommendation, based upon the charter, on this plain language, does not look that the city clerk has the authority to do such. And therefore, I believe that it is in best interest to table it to determine who has authority to properly revoke such a license.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense. So now, who, does the city have to make that?
Prevail inside.
Prevail inside. Okay, so prevail inside, who wants to make a motion to table it?
We table, right?
Why don't we, I don't understand. Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. You out of order now. You out of order.
So we can table now.
You can make a motion, anybody on the prevailing side can make a motion to table it.
Make a motion to table it.
You're not on the prevailing side.
Oh, I'm not.
I'm, I'm making.
I thought I didn't vote at all.
No, 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 you nay. Prevail inside means yes. Okay, so.
Trick me into that nay then.
Okay, George, okay, come on now, y'all. You guys should know your Robert's rules of order. Come on now. Okay, so, do, can you, can you say that a little louder, please? Make a motion to what? Once something is voted on, you cannot, ask your parliamentarian. Go ahead. Can you answer that question for me?
Well, you made a motion and you voted on something that we can't do, so.
It should have failed, Jane.
You guys have to speak up, 'cause they can't hear you. Okay, so a motion was put on the floor that we, we did not know at that time that we didn't have the authority to revoke this person's license.
The clerk does.
No, the clerk, wait, hold up, hold up, Sandra.
The motion was to instruct the clerk to revoke the license. The clerk doesn't have the authority to revoke it on the basis that you guys have. So you made a motion to do that. It passed.
And then you told us that you don't have the authority to do that?
No.
No, the, the, the attorney.
Attorney, and in the, that's why we here, because of the opinion too. So the opposing can make a motion, we have that, to table the instructions until we can.
Get the right person to authorize that revoking.
Okay, it's been a motion, uh.
To table.
To table. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion on this before we do this?
No discussion on table, ma'am.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, roll call on this too. Because, hold, hold up, hold up, roll call.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
I'm sorry?
You're taking a roll call vote.
Oh, for the table?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
No.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Four one.
Four one, okay, motion pass. Okay, now we are into public participation. Ms. Barbara Cooper?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Protown, all our council, all residents. I am here representing the Inxter Goodfellas. This Saturday is our annual pancake birthday. You can eat pancakes, starting at eight AM to twelve noon. We have bacon, pork sausage, sausage, pepper sausage, grits, with or without cheese. And we have food. And we also have drinks. Coffee, tea, apple juice, orange juice, cranberry juice, whatever kind of juice you want, we got it. But we want everyone to come out and support. No child without a Christmas, the Inxter Goodfellas. And we need your help as a community to help support the Inxter Goodfellas. And, uh, I look forward to seeing everyone there. Uh, this year, the Ink Town, uh, writers, uh, will be doing our carryout breakfasts, so if you want a carryout breakfast, you need to call me by Thursday to let me know that you want a carryout breakfast on Saturday. Trying this out, and I think it's gonna work well. And my phone number is three one three, five zero five, one one four zero. Three one three, five zero five, one one four zero. Also, we've extended the date for our newspaper to October the thirtieth. So if you're still interested in putting an ad in our paper, we appreciate that as well. And our applications will be going out, uh, this Friday. Uh, they will be here at City Hall and at, uh, the Booker Dozier. And I will be taking applications to the schools that have our children in the city of Inxter. Uh, I'll be taking those around to the schools, uh, next week. So once again, please, please, come out and support the Inxter Goodfellas. No child without a Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Melvin Gatewood and Marilyn Johnson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My heart is really sad, but from where I see tonight, but I want to thank Councilman Watley, Councilman Chisholm. I thank you for being for us. We're just a group, I don't know why the rest of them won't come, that we trying to do something, that's it. We have opened a free store. Everything in our store is free. We have appliances, TVs, everything. We thank Mr. We have appliances, TVs, everything, we thank Mr. Cooper. He helped us out for a little while when he could, and had it end up, he did it still. We have been trying to get a building for two years in Inkster. And I started praying because of saying, I am really sad.
You speaking to the mic?
To see what's been going on here.
Are you speaking to the mic? Thank you.
Just to see what's been going on here tonight, that we trying to help a community, and we can't get no help. We haven't been approved by builders, I don't turn on all the proper paperwork yet, just to hear someone call me and tell me. We promised to tell enough somebody else, so we sorry. And we done went online, a property belonged to the city. Doing all the paperwork, everything we need to do, to help to give, we not charging nothing. We worked together, these people volunteer, they don't ask for no pay, no nothing. And then they come in here and hear all this, and the wrongdoing, and the misjustice, and people getting away with getting builders, and weed houses. And we can't do nothing to give to the community, to help the people? We can't get nothing, we just put in another building. Four, what, four weeks ago, six weeks ago?
Let me say this.
And I'm hurting.
I'm Melvin Gatewood.
Hi.
We can put up a request for a building located right here at John, uh... John Daly and Trobridge, twenty-four oh seven, Tro, John Daly. It's a vacant building, the building's been vacant for over nine years. The city purchased the building some time ago for two thousand dollars. We're requesting to purchase the building from the city for seven thousand.
Nothing, give us nothing.
The, the, the building itself needs about twenty thousand dollars worth of repairs, which we are prepared to do ourselves. And we're requesting that building, that we may open up a free store, where we give away, we've been operating in the city now since twenty twenty-one. We, we were first located on Inkster Road across from the, uh...
Stardust.
The Stardust, and then we were in Invictus Building. And all of these locations, we were asked to leave out. So now we're asking for a location that we can repair, fix, and give away everything. We give away clothes, food, kitchen appliances, household appliances, everything that we have. People donate to us, and we give away free. Right now, we're being forced to keep a, a number of, of things in stores and paying a storage every month to keep these items in stores because we have no place to give them away yet. And so we're requesting from the city that we may be able to purchase that building, make the necessary repairs, and make it a plus for the city. That's what our request is. We have put, just a moment, sir, please. We put in this request over a month ago with the Ms. Stevens, Stevenson, Steve, what's her name, Taylor?
Stephanie Taylor.
Stephanie Taylor. She has, we have talked to her almost every day. Every day she has promised to give us the paperwork. And we have yet to receive anything from her to be able to give to you. And so this is where we're standing right now. We would just like to be able to move forward, we would like the council to, to help us to, to go forward in this gender. We are a recognized nonprofit organization. God's work, our hands.
Okay, so let me tell you this. Can you put your number on here, on the back of this, and then we're gonna get the proper people to handle what you need to handle it? Okay.
So we wanna know a yea or nay.
We can't do it tonight, we can't, we can't do it tonight.
We just wanna know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give this to the mayor and the...
The mayor is the one that recommended this building to us.
Right, okay, so we, I'm, we gonna, I'm gonna give them, let those people handle it and find out what's going on, and then we're gonna give you a call back, okay?
Thank you.
We just wanna know a yea or nay, so we be as the Bible, so we can shake the dust off our feet, and we'll move to another city.
And good job at what you're doing. Thank you.
And we don't wanna do it, I've been here sixty-five years all my life.
All right. All right, thank you.
About to tell you.
Yes.
You say you put in for the building, uh, through Stephanie Taylor? You need to note that to find out whether that, and, and...
She promised, she promised to send us the proposal, we haven't gotten nothing yet.
Well, she's been promised a lot, but it ain't happened.
And she has promised to pass, to give us the paperwork, and to pass it on to the council, and nothing has happened.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, you can give this to the city clerk, and she can pass it out for me, okay? Thank, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Octavia Smith?
Hi. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, council, residents. Wow, I done forgot what I was supposed to come up here about.
Easy can be done, huh?
Oh, my goodness, okay. So I did write down something, um, but I just wanna say through these challenges, we must hold our heads up and still fight for our wonderful city to get better. Um, the Chamber, Inkster Chamber of, uh, Inkster Chamber of Commerce, we still have calendar ads going on. So please, you can always go to our website, or just email us at Inkster Chamber of Commerce, um, so you can put in your ads. We are also, as we do every year, we support the Haunted Funeral Home. They are open Thursday, I believe, through Sunday, it's fifteen dollars. Go and check out the Haunted Funeral Home, support Inkster businesses. I don't believe in going in there because I don't want nobody touching me, I can't take that, but, you know, guys, go. I will be there just to be on the outside, we'll be on the outside, you know, saying hi to y'all, and y'all go in. Um, but it's every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's fifteen dollars. So we just wanna just encourage all of us to hang on in there, and I, I know that you guys have a hard decision up there, you know, and I'm, I keep all my prayers, but just remember also, I turned into the Sixties Club, y'all, so...
All right.
I'm in there now, so just keep the whole city held up in prayer, and let us just fight, the good fight of faith, and I thank you.
Thank you. Gabe Henderson?
Hello, family, thank, thank you for allowing me to come up here and say something, uh... What was I gonna say? No, I, I know what I'm gonna say, but, uh, but thank you for, you know, listening for our, our Goodfellow plea, okay? And like I said, it's, it's a wonderful organization, been helping kids for many, many years. You know, Mr. Do, Mr. Booker Dozier, uh, twenty-something years ago, he got before the council, council was over there at Booker Dozier, well, at the complex, he got up and said, you know, we need some help, we need some help, and our kids need things for Christmas and all that. And all of a sudden, I saw that tear run down, uh, you know, his face, and I joined, I say, I'm with you, so help us. Okay, beautification, uh, uh, our last, uh, okay, cleanup is October, okay, October the twentieth. So that's our last, we're gonna have our dumpsters at the four locations. Okay, we have the Booker Dozier, and that's our main meeting place, that anybody wanna come there, get some trash bags, some gloves, some good old coffee, and some tea, I might roast some hot dogs, you know? But anyway, okay, Booker Dozier, okay, Wheatley Park, that's on Penn between, between and Carla, Lamone Park on Pine Street, Westwood Park at Stolen. So, uh, that's gonna be our last, you know, available for dumpsters, for anybody wanna get rid of some, you know, stuff. I need to do that myself. Okay, I love y'all, so come on out, and, uh, hey, we gonna be all right. Just gotta do the right thing, you know? Like, you know, right, hey, brother Chisholm?
Yes, sir.
You know, we say, you said ask not, but, you know, what the city makes to do, do for us, but what we can do, along with all, you know, the knowing and the knowledge and the wisdom of what you guys do to make sure everything's legal, but we can do a whole lot if we work together.
Right.
That's, that's true. I love y'all.
That's gonna be our, our running joke for all eternity, huh? That's gonna be our running joke for all eternity, huh?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, Mr. Miller?
Oh, the date, oh, yeah, the date, of course, the twentieth of October, that's the last, okay. And she either had to shut me down, I'm gone.
All right, all right, you have a good day. Good night.
Good evening, Pro Tem and Council. Little concerned about some of the stuff we just saw here this evening. Things happen when, with Robert's Rules and motions to reconsider and rescind, it happens. It's that orange I had earlier, I'm sorry. The, um, things happen occasionally with regard to the, to the rules and motions to reconsider and, and rescind, and I, and I can appreciate that. One of the things I wanted to speak to you guys on is the disrespect that they seem to be showing y'all with this planning and developing in the city. If, if, it's getting to the point where people can say stuff to y'all with impunity as they walk out of the room because things didn't go their way. Or if people can walk over the ordinances to the, at their leisure in order to develop what they wanna develop, with, regardless of how we feel and how we wanna create our city, then they disrespecting y'all, and they disrespecting us by proxy. So I wanna make sure that y'all strengthen y'all resolve with this thing, this is, this is a one-time thing when it comes to this stuff.
Okay, please, please.
This is a one-time thing when it comes to this. So if people are disrespecting y'all and doing things with impunity with regard to how they develop the city, then that's means that they don't, they not here for us at all. They have an ulterior plan and motive with, with regard to what they wanna do, with what they do, with the gains that they make in our community, so you get one shot, once they get it, it's got. So be careful, strengthen your resolve, y'all need some help, let us know.
Thank you. Say, howdy, y'all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wasn't even really coming to say that today, but that's what he was talking about, that's what I'm saying right there. When the folks come out here, and really, you know, have their own agendas set up. And it's, uh, it's like you go to prison for inside trading. You know, you go to prison for inside trading. If you have one business, turn to another business, and all these things that happened and transpired under the last administration that led up to these things that's going on right now, we have to let folks know, be aware of it, that it wasn't with the same administration. These things have been going on from past, past things, and what it is, is we have folks coming in here, have their own agenda. Like you said, they got their own ulterior motives, and they're not, uh, we don't even have opportunity to purchase the buildings before they even, uh, purchase most of the time. You know, we, we don't have the time because they having the capital. We need to start paying more attention and put things in, in, uh, as you said, in writing or whatnot to protect us from that inside trading, and protect us from them making, if it's not according to our, our likings, and things that we want here done in the city, and the way that we trying to go, uh, you, you, uh, y'all, they violated the ordinance. You know, we don't have, they don't have a right to sue, you know, attorney. We need to try to figure out ways to get those things embedded into those contracts, you know? I don't know how you do it, and as I said before, you gotta come up here till we blew in the face and talk about it, but until somebody do something about it, won't none be done. But God bless you all.
God bless you. Okay, Rebecca Daniels?
Good evening, Madam Pro Tem, Council, and to the residents of Inkster. I just wanted to make the statement that with regard to the flower bowl, um, when that building got burned down, I live right at the corner of Somerset and Inkster, I live on Somerset Street, so that was of grave concern to me. And one of the things that I brought up was the fact that it was across the street from a daycare. So after becoming, I was told that because it was not a school, that that did not apply. Once I became a planning commissioner, it came up again, and it was stated again from the planning department, that the daycare was not considered a school, so that it did not apply. I just wanted to make that known, that was one of the, because I think she brought that up, but it was stated to us in, in the planning commission meeting, that that does not apply because the daycare is not considered a school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are under, uh, Mayor and Council's, uh... I'm sorry, city clerk first, you have anything, city clerk?
Yes, I wanna remind everyone...
Okay, please, please need to have order.
That ballots are available at the clerk's office. If you have not received your ballot, or you don't participate in the permanent absentee list, then you're welcome to come to our offices, we're happy to, we're happy to, um, issue your ballot. And the election will be November seventh, um, three weeks from tomorrow. And there's a listing on the tables of all the unofficial write-in candidates that you have been asking for. It's an unofficial list, it won't be official until next Friday, we'll take this stuff. Yes, at the clerk's office. That's all I have.
Okay, city treasurer, you have anything? Any other administration, administrator, you have one?
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to, it's Fire Prevention Month, and I wanted to invite everyone out. We're having an open house on, um, October twenty-eighth from eleven to three. Bring your families, your children, grandchildren, whoever, come out. Should be a good time, it's from eleven to three on October twenty-eighth. If anybody has any questions about it, you can call my office, and the number is three one three five six three nine eight seven four. That's three one three five six three nine eight seven four. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Oh, and there's flyers back here on the table, sorry, Jerome.
Not all at once, no, I'm just...
Good evening, my mayor, pro tem and council, to this body, to the viewing audience, um, just a couple announcements. Why, I know you guys have asked me about where I am with the water meters. It will be coming before you guys on the next meeting, which is November the sixth. I have two items coming that I hope I will be allowed to place on the agenda. One is that one, and the other one is for the library to have windows installed where the new museum is going. Those are two items I would be bringing before you guys on November the sixth. It's been a long time, take a lot to get this finance worked out for these meters. So I hope y'all understand when it comes before y'all. Appreciate that.
All right, appreciate you, thank you for all of your work. Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's get, Councilman Williams?
Call me?
Yes, you, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment.
All right.
I would hope that a lot of us council sitting here, we, we need to look at what's good for this city. A lot of things that we facing, we face it really for not thinking. And people have pushed a lot of things on us that, that is not good for this city. And then some of the same people that pushes to try to get these things in, and turn around, and they pull out with them, and then they wanna come back here and say, hey, hey, you know, that's what's making the city at this point. It's gonna be all down with a lot of lawsuits, okay? See, first of all, I, I got on this council. I got on here to try to make a difference, okay? And if I look at all the stuff that's going on here, if I could turn the clock back, I never would have ran council because I'm not trying to belittle anybody, but there's so much confusion right up here, okay? We, we'll, we'll go somewhere, we got favors out here, we say we do this for this person here, but now all of a sudden, we don't wanna do nothing over here, which is right, you see what I'm saying? It's what, but anything that you dealing with, everything that you, you dealing with is, should be for the, for the righteous thing for Inkster. And you got to understand that. You know, something burning my heart real bad in this city, because the simple fact is, you know, we got all these big... because the simple fact is, you know, we got all these big-time people in the city. They wants to say, well, we need to do this, and we need to do that. But you notice, but I found out one thing, when all our children come together, we can accomplish anything and move anything forward. And it's no type of person that can come here in Inkster and file lawsuits on us, okay, if we work together. And I wanna leave that with you. I mean, that's not, I'm finna, I'm finna exit out. Okay, I'm finna exit out, but I would hope to say to this council and to the newcomers, you understand?
Hold that thought. Excuse me, I can hear you. If I can hear you, the neighbor, TV can hear you, all of us, we can't hear him. Please, thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, what I'm saying is, we not, we got to understand, you know, you could be on this team, you don't be on that team, and, you know, I went through my whole life worrying about, listening to people holler about how good Robichaud was, and how East of Vikings was, okay? But you got that same stuff going on in your community right now. You know, who is the best, who can do this, and this and that. And then we like to jump in these different fields, okay? And what we really need to do is start compromising. I got something I wanna really say, but I'm not gonna say it now. I'm gonna wait till I exit, and then I'm gonna go public with it, okay? Some things, what we got to understand, we just can't sit here knowing that our children are suffering. Okay, but it don't mean nothing to y'all, 'cause it couldn't, because we'll be trying to do something for these kids. You know, you look at what's going on out here, okay, yeah. I agree with you when you came out saying about all these marijuana places. But how did they slide in? If everybody was against marijuana, how did it slide in? See, some two faces going on, okay? But I'm saying this, and I'm gonna make my little exit speech at the next council meeting, but I wanna say this to all of y'all. We need to really get it together, okay? And I wanna say this, see, once, once you bring something and you pass it, and then wanna go back now and destroy it, okay? Now, when all that issue came up about the flower bowl and all of this stuff, that man had his way. That man had his way. He did anything that he wanted to do, okay? All them places he opened up, I could, I asked him, I went to him, I said, man, how can you open up, how can you open up eight places? Okay? That man had eight licenses. Come on, now, act like y'all losing it up here. And I was trying to figure out, how can you have all of them? Okay, but that's gonna go a little far, 'cause we gonna, we gonna talk about that. Now, all of a sudden, we're talking about putting our lawyers to work, you understand? I don't know about our real, our number one lawyer, but this lawyer here costs a lot of money. I want y'all to know, he's on the town, okay? I wanna say this to all of the candidates that's running. Wish you the best, but if you win, go in, roll your sleeves up, and do the best for Inkster. Not for individuals, best for Inkster, okay? You're gonna have other nationalities, other people coming in, you want you to do favors for them, but yet and still, keep your head into focus of what Inkster really needs to be about, okay? Because, you know, and I just say this, I see some things I need to say that I think are very two-faced, okay? Some of these issues that we're talking about, some of the same people holler about they wanna get rid of them, but they was the ones that brought them here. So let us understand that we have to work with each other. It's hard working with Steve Chisholm, but I gotta work with him, right?
It's hard working with you, it's hard working with you too.
That's right. You see what I'm saying? So I'm just saying, that's always gonna be that way, okay? But anyway, we have to learn to get along, be intelligent enough, work together, you understand? And if we disagree, we don't have to be disagreeable, you know? I wanna thank my number hero, my hero, uh, police, stop, John. Number one police. Doing a great job over there, having this team, doing a great job, and my man down here, right there. What's the name now? I shouldn't be get that, 'cause we got another Cooper down in housing too. Ano sister, oh, no. All right, all right. Hey, you got the red one Cooper here somewhere. Everybody in good hands, all right. But I wanna say something before I leave this table here. Hadn't I known, when it come down to running for council, I never would have ran for this council. I don't believe in disagreement and wrongdoing. I don't believe in that, okay? And then, you know, and a lot of, a lot of you are sitting out here around in the neighborhood. You're wrongdoers, okay? You wanna keep stuff going when we don't have to. Just think about it. I wanna, I wanna say this on all candidates that's running. Go in there and think about Inkster. Do what you gotta do to make Inkster a better place. So I, that's all I see right now, and love you. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Washington?
Oh, after that, um, not tonight. I don't have anything tonight. I have something for sure next, next council meeting.
Okay, Councilwoman Whiteley?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to address the situation where she said it couldn't go because it was a school. This body changed that ordinance to include daycare centers. And that's one reason why he's in violation of the ordinance. So you don't have to believe me. Be your own detective and look it up for yourself. There's an ordinance on the books that says you cannot be within five hundred feet of a daycare center. So that was one of the things I wanted to say. And another thing is, I wanted to reiterate that you can't legislate out of fear. You can't do your job if you're afraid that something bad will happen if you do it.
I agree with that.
So if your worst fear is someone suing you, you hope you have those high-priced intelligent attorneys who can repel all comers. That's what you're looking for, 'cause anybody can sue for any reason. And we've proven that, because they've won some of them that they sued us for. So let's not be afraid to do our job. Let's not fear the fact that someone won't like us, or someone will think we're mean, or someone will think we're involved in something. Your job is laid out for you in these books. All you have to do is read them, and then perform them. And I'm hoping that's what'll happen in the future. That's all.
Okay, Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. One is to the treasurer, and I'll pass you this person's contact information after, Treasury Green, and if you can reach out to her directly, I appreciate that. She was just asking, and this is some stuff we talked about the past, how many parks are eligible for distribution of the eighty-five thousand dollar grant that came from Commissioner Kinesik's office? And what parks and not the Inkster Rec will get money from the eighty-five thousand? Who makes that decision? Who makes the decision on how it's spent? Do they need to put together a committee that has a few residents on it? And then the second thing revert, I'm sorry, regarding, a couple years ago, we voted on stock investments with some of the money being good fiduciaries of tax money. And she just wanted to know what stocks were invested into, or what has been the return, positive or negative. So I will pass you her contact information after the meeting, so you can touch base with her on that to provide all clarity. And in addition, um, where's my? Oh, well, that should be it for now, and I'll just talk to Mr. Bivis after the meeting.
All right, thank you. Council Michelle?
Yep, yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make sure that we, who's going to give us the information concerning, who's can, who can execute the revoke of the license? Who's supposed to give us that information?
You issued it to myself in my office. I will put together another memo and issue it around like we did the previous memo.
Okay, so they will, they will give us the information of who is in charge of doing so, so we can be able to do what we need to do, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And, you know, I have to echo what my colleague, Councilwoman Whiteley had made mention. You know, the facts are the facts, and that's what we have to go by. And the things are written in these books that she made mention about. And we have to make sure we read our books and be able to operate for the people of the city of Inkster. So, and with that being said, I do have a family that was fired out last night, early this morning, at twelve fifty-four Helen Street. And I just want the city to remember that family that was burned out this morning. It was, you know, it was, I mean, it was like the whole force, everyone was over there, chief. And early in the morning, four, five in the morning, the family had to, you know, wake up to something like that. So I just ask that you all to remember that family.
What's that, right?
It's, uh, at twelve, I forget their name, I'll get you their name, but twelve fifty-four Helen Street. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have no comments.
Yeah, it's across the street from.
Across the street? Motion closed. Report. Okay, all listeners, feather side. Everyone have a good night.